Twenty twenty one at six thirty. Attendance roll call. Kate?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Kristen?
Here.
And Reimer is here. All right. Statement of public notice, this is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and as a public meeting, prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and town of Cedarburg, as well as a news graphic and the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bignacki?
Thank you. This evening, we ask you to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the regular board meeting of April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, also the budget and finance report, which includes the district's financial information, summary of accounts, check register, check detail, and credit card transactions, as well as the personnel report. This evening, we have four individuals who are leaving the district, and we are asking for seven professional staff contracts to be approved. I ask that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call. Nitzel?
Aye.
Krier?
Aye.
Padberg?
Aye.
Leach?
Aye.
And Reimer's an aye unanimous. All right, I'd like to move on to item four, recommendations, A.
Rick, do you want to speak to that, or would you like Alan just to speak to the Global Scholars South African trip?
For the trips?
Yep.
Sorry, I was still trying to log in. You're running a little late, I apologize.
Oh, yours, Alan.
No.
I can do it otherwise. You got it? Okay.
No.
No, I'll just do it real quick, Alan. The two trips? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to recommend a board approval of the Global Scholars trips. They were at the committee meeting. Obviously, COVID will decide whether or not they happen or not, but the company they worked with was really great, and the last one that had to be canceled, they took care of them and credited everything towards this next trip, so they just would like to have those, the next two trips to Costa.
South Africa.
Italy and Greece.
Yep.
And South Africa is the first one, so I'd move to approve.
Second that motion.
Did you say something, Dave?
He said second.
I beat him to it.
Okay.
Kate was fast.
Yeah, you have a delay.
All right, so just to be clear, we're moving for A and B. All right, motion and a second. Roll call. Nitzel?
Aye.
Krier?
Aye.
Padberg?
Aye.
Leach?
Aye.
And Reimer's an aye unanimous, thank you. And then moving on to donations, Mr. Bignacki?
Thank you. We have three donations that we've asked the board to approve through consent agenda. The first one is the amount of $1,000 from Randy Growth. This donation is to be used for the CHS baseball concession stand. Next donation, the amount of $1,500 from the Cedarburg Lions Club. This donation is to be used by CHS robotics program. And the last donation is from CG Schmidt for the district's dedication plaques and valued at $1,950. I'd ask that these donations totaling $4,450 be approved.
Moved to approve, donations.
Second, Padberg.
The committee recommended approving them, and we also got an update from staff on the status of their work and the things they've been doing on the equity for all in our school district, and they just gave us an update on that of what they're working on, and they'll be coming back to the committee in the future with another update.
Thank you. Personnel and finance, Mr. Krier?
Oh, yeah, we went through the budget. I think Ben should probably tell you on any details, but the bottom line is we're... I'm sorry, I'm having some...
That's all right. Ben, can you just step up and just mention what happened? Ben's going to talk a little bit. Dave?
Thank you.
That's good.
Yes, we met last night. Primary items that we went over were the renewals for earmark for next year for a food service vendor, and then we also reviewed the school fees and facility use fees for the upcoming year. No changes there. And then we dove into the budget for the upcoming year and kind of forecasted that a little bit, so it does going through some of the major pieces that are on the agenda for next year, went into some of the details in terms of items related to increasing enrollments in our buildings, and so some of the needs that are being generated from that, and then just forecasted what the ESR funds would have an impact on our system and what they'd be used for. So most of that information will come back to the board next month during the preliminary budget proposal.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next item is public comment. I have a list of people here who have signed up to comment, and I'll read a disclaimer first, and then we'll start with the list. In the past, the state attorney general issued guidance on how governmental bodies such as school boards should conduct the public comment portions of their meetings. This guidance was given to assist the governmental bodies in avoiding violation of the state's open meeting laws. The essence of this guidance is that unless the topic being brought by the board, to the board, rather, by the public, is listed on that meeting's agenda, no significant discussion can be held on that item. Instead, the topic may be listed as an item on a future meeting agenda whereby discussion could then be held. The reason for this guidance is not to limit open discussion, but to rather ensure all interested parties have equal opportunity to participate in the discussions with the full school board. We on the school board encourage community input, and we want to hear from your constituents. However, we also take the state's open meeting laws seriously, and will follow the guidance as outlined by the state attorney general. Therefore, if an item is listed on tonight's agenda, open dialogue may occur between the individual from the public and board members. If it is not listed, the board will be limited to listening only and will not be able to respond to comments or questions. Furthermore, school board policy zero one four four point two, the board will respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable laws. This includes, but is not limited to, information under current or imminent litigation and/or student-specific information per policy eight three three zero. If your item is not listed on tonight's agenda and you want to have discussion regarding this topic, you're encouraged to contact the district superintendent and request that your item is listed on a future meeting agenda. As always, you're also encouraged to discuss any issue with individual board members on a one-on-one basis outside the meeting setting. Please make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience. As per school board policy one six seven point three, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Please note that this is a public meeting, and we ask everyone to address one another with the courtesy and respect you would like to receive in return. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. If you are under the age of eighteen or are a student in Cedarburg schools, please state your name, your first name only. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed via the district's YouTube channel and will be posted on the district's website. Mr. Leach, do you have the timer?
Kristen's closer to...
Okay.
I'll be able to see it, so she's going to run it.
Okay. All right. Then we will start with Connie Kincaid.
My name's Connie Kincaid. I'm at nine seven five W seven two five five Linden Street in Cedarburg. What I'm going to share is what I intended to email to you all when I thought this meeting would be without public comment and just virtual. Since it's moved to in-person with comment, I just thought a little bit easier to share with you all here instead of you feeling like you need to email back or respond, so here you go. Members of the board, I understand that public comment won't be taking place this week. I'm sure a difficult but mindful choice. As such, I wanted to take a moment to share what I would have publicly. Here goes. Board members, this year seems to have both flown by and lasted ages. Our students and community members have adapted, and I hope that the majority of families continue to assume positive intent of administration, the CSD school board members, and of one another. It is a big ask, but one I feel we are capable of. Thank you for reflecting on this past year and listening to community members as the school calendar was prepared and approved of for two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two, for speaking as one voice when the tougher decisions need to be made. I'm continually impressed by the fact that while there are seven individuals on our school board, that decisions are made collectively. That can't always be an easy process. Hopefully, in years to come, it's certainly less stressful than this past year has been. At the beginning of the year, I placed faith in administration, in our amazing educators, and in the decision-making process that is placed on the board on several matters. Our family will continue to trust that mitigation measures in the fall align with the best interests of our students, and that we can all make safe choices for our community to that end. Beyond that, I hope that our community can learn to listen to one another in respectful ways and learn to have difficult but necessary conversations. I believe our CSD administration teams recognize that there are areas of growth that are important to families. As such, I look forward to seeing that process evolve and meet the needs of current and future CSD students with the support of the board. On behalf of my family, thank you for staying the course this year, for keeping an open mind to so many emails that have been sent your way, and for the respectful replies that have been offered as time allowed. With thanks, Connie Kincaid, Momda James, second grade, virtual student. I have a little bit of time left, so I just want to say, I think it's really important to recognize the areas that have changed this year. We have individuals in this room with masks, without masks, with medical exemptions, perhaps not, and individuals like myself feel comfortable being able to sit amongst anyone because of vaccines, because they are available. I'm hoping that this allows for more open communication with one another, that there's less hesitancy, that there's more trust, and I just again want to say thank you to all the board members present, as well as to Mr. Goldbeck and Mr. Kennedy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Connie.
Jesse?
Oh, my goodness. That was aggressive.
Sorry, it's the only app I could find.
Oh, now I have to figure out how to reset it.
I think it's on the other side, isn't it? On the left side, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, there we go.
There you go.
My name is Jessie Machambu. I live at two three three nine West Custer Avenue. I am in front of the board for the eighth time this school year, asking for the same thing again. And no one is moving the goalposts, as I was just recently told by the district. And again, the district will still not put DEI on the agenda. The district can continue to put out statements about how it takes racism in any form seriously, and that the district has no policies put, and that the district has policies put in place to keep BIPOC students safe, but just because you say the words doesn't mean that those words are true. Remember, actions speak way louder. There needs to be follow-through. There was LGBTQ plus education talks a couple of years ago. This was fine on the surface until you realize that the transgender students are still being called disgusting in the hallways, and gay is still being used in a hurtful derogatory way, as recently as a week ago. DEI was in a way discussed at the last curriculum meeting, but it was concerning that it was being discussed because, and I quote this, "the interest in it." This was implied a couple of times that the reason people are asking the district to implement anti-racist curriculum and bias training for the staff is because of the interest. Wanting the BIPOC students to not have to deal with racism on a daily basis is not an interest, it is a necessity. Not wanting the BIPOC students to suffer from the emotional trauma from the racism that they have to deal with is not just some hobby that some board people came up with. People have been coming to this district for years, telling you that you have a racism problem. For years, you have had parents, students, and other concerned family members telling you, and you have for years done the same thing, which is nothing. I have no idea how wanting more representation of different cultures, races, religions, sexual orientation, et cetera, in pictures, books, documentaries, staff, et cetera, is such a scary thing. I also do not understand why people are fighting so hard against bias training. Since when was it a bad thing to correct a wrong? We are taught from a young age, or at least I hope most of you were, that when you hurt someone's feelings, you apologize and don't do it again. Racism has many layers, and as I have said multiple times, microaggressions are extremely hurtful, and anti-racist curriculum and bias training will be the steps to take to correct those wrongs. No student should have to deal with being hurt. We need to stop with the "it is what it is." Kids will be kids, and toughen up. The district needs to stop tolerating racism in any form. I get that it can be hard for some to admit that they have said or done racist things, but the cycle of hate will continue, and we cannot allow more generations of kids to be hurt. Just remember, your kids may get away with it in CSD, but there are real-world consequences outside of the bubble.
Thank you. Demetrius, just a reminder, you don't have to state your last name or address.
My name is Demetrius. This district is continuing to lie. You have the nerve to say that my mom is stopping me and my brother from talking with the district regarding the racism that we have experienced. This is not true. My brother and I chose not to speak with you. We chose not to speak because of how we see the board, students, and adults in the community treating people for speaking out. I know five-year-olds more mature than you. There are days that I do not even want to come out to school because of how I see people speaking about the shootings and running over BLM supporters, and they still treat minorities with disgust and violence. You say there is not a systemic racism problem in the district or the county, but I, my brother, and my dad live it every day. Just because you don't have to deal with the hate does not mean that it does not exist. I'm pissed off with how my brother has been treated since preschool. He was a confident, proud, young black boy. Now he hides his skin and hair from everyone in his school. How dare you sit up there with your privilege and ignore the fact that you broke a child? I am not the only BIPOC student that feels this way. Your lack of action has proven how you really feel about us, minority students. You don't care how we are treated. You don't care about our emotional well-being. Frankly, it seems like if you are not a rich, white male, you don't care at all. Anyone that is different in the district is treated with disgust and contempt, and I'm tired of it. Get off your high horse and make the changes that are needed. Also, my family is still waiting for that apology that you owe us. It does not cost you anything to just say, "I'm sorry." Maybe instead of putting lie-filled statements out there, you can at least start with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tim McGuire. I live at three five nine West Thornapple Lane in Grafton, but part of the Cedarburg School District. I wish to make my comments referencing the Critical Race Theory, known as CRT. As a senior citizen, taxpayer, and owner of a home on Thornapple Lane in Cedarburg School District, my wife and I are aware of Cedarburg School District's outstanding reputation. In fact, that's why we purchased where we did. We are also aware of the criticism of CRT and believe that this is a curriculum piece that should be avoided in order to maintain the quality of Cedarburg schools. CRT is a divisive program that promotes collective guilt, segregation, racial stereotyping-scapegoating, which serves to pit one group based on skin color as oppressors and racists, and the others as victims. This is not a productive piece of education. It does not belong in public schools. It promotes anything but peace and love to thy neighbor. It promotes my neighbor is a racist. Where is the common sense and acceptance of everyone in this philosophy of indoctrination? Martin Luther King famously said, "You should judge people by the content of their character, not the color of their skin." We hear this quoted often because it is extremely true. Schools are not meant to be indoctrinational institutions graduating social justice warriors. Schools are to educate students for their future job opportunities and to be productive citizens in the community. Families, churches, synagogues, temples are the places where value-based ethics are decided by individual families. In recent months, the CRT curriculum has been banned from many states, including Idaho, Tennessee, Texas, Oklahoma, and these following states are currently working on legislation to do the same. North Dakota, I'm sorry, North Carolina, Arizona, Louisiana, Iowa, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, West Virginia, South Dakota, Missouri, and Florida. I would encourage you to listen to the following African-Americans to hear their thoughts about CRT. Candace Owens, Burgess Owens, Herschel Walker, Dr. Ben Carson, Robert Woodson, Thomas Sowell and Shelby Steele. I strongly encourage and advise the school board to leave CRT behind and move forward with a curriculum that focuses on educating students, an education that provides students with necessary skills and competence regardless of their ethnic or social status for future success. As we are... It's about a time. Thank you very much.
You good, Kristen? Rick?
Good evening. Rick Harsina, West six one, North eight four zero, Arbor Drive, Cedarburg. Cedar Grove, Belgium, Elm Brook, Waukesha, Kelmarine, New Berlin, Palmyra Eagle, some school districts in the area. Kohl's, Quidditch, Walmart, Sam's Club, Target, CVS, Trader Joe's, Starbucks, City Milwaukee, City of Wawatosa, City of Cedarburg, City of Shorewood. The school districts have all either removed the mask mandates and made them optional, or they're going to do so very shortly. The businesses have all removed the mask mandates and are open for business, and the cities have either done that immediately or they're in the process of doing so. The CDC says that fully vaccinated individuals are no longer required by their guidance to wear masks either indoors or outdoors or engage in social distancing. I'm thankful that the president put the meeting on live today and brought in public comment. I'm also grateful and thankful that a special meeting has been scheduled for Monday with the purpose of addressing this mask issue. So I understand that the board takes it seriously, and I do appreciate that. That's a very, a very good sign to see. Last April, there was kind of a reawakening in southeastern Wisconsin. Parents and citizens all over the area took a look at their school boards, took a look at the directions that the districts were heading, and not just on critical race theory or on the mask issue, but other issues in general. Banded together, and like in Cedarburg here, they've formed some citizen groups that are going to be active and organized, and some other larger groups that are going to be looking at the issues that school boards face on a regular basis. This is good. This is an awakening where the citizens are going to be extremely involved in what's going on. We saw this in the last election here in Cedarburg, where there was a change in the board. I don't know how the mask issue would have been decided next Monday if the elections had gone another way. So I just want to close by saying, appreciate the meeting that you're having here today, the meeting that is going to take place on Monday, and thankful that a group of citizens, some of them sitting behind me here, have decided to band together and take a critical look at the school board, support the school board when we can and where we can, but also challenge the school board when they need to be challenged. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Sharlin, sixteen oh two, Skyline Drive, Cedarburg, New Berlin School District, Elm Brook School District, St. Paul Lutheran School, Rayburn, Grafton, Ozaki Christian School, Okonomowoc School District, Arrowhead Union High School, Cedar Grove, Belgium School District, Germantown School District, Kiwaskum School District, Kettle Moraine, Maguannago School District, and Trinity Lutheran School of Freystad. I could go on and on, but this is a very short list of over 100 schools and districts that have already gone mask optional or will be mask optional, starting with summer school. I'm thrilled to see that Mr. Bignacki's plan for a mask optional and quarantine-free fall. But why wait until fall? Cedarburg needs to join what is quickly becoming the majority of area districts and give parents the choice to mask their children starting now. I am glad to hear that the board is putting mask and quarantine policies on the agenda for the special meeting next Monday. But why couldn't that vote be tonight? Where are all the board members? Why was there a plan to make this meeting virtual only and ban public comment when there were hours of public comment at the last meeting? Clearly, we, the parents, need to be heard, and closing off board meetings signals a lack of transparency and open communication that has traditionally existed within the district. Lastly, I ask Mr. Bignacki, Mr. Alan Growth, and the Curriculum Committee to please be forthright with the community regarding the new access, equity, and inclusion for all plans that were discussed at the May fourth curriculum meeting. There has been a lot of public discussion on this topic, and the public may be interested in knowing about the $6,000 that has already been spent on a virtual equity summit scheduled for July of this summer, featuring speakers who are well-known in training Critical Race Theory to other educators. Per the project management plan presented at the May fourth meeting, the goal of attending the Equity Summit is to develop actionable steps for the schools and the district. I look forward to the board and the, I look forward to the board and the public hearing more details about the access, equity, and inclusion for all plans already in place so that we can examine how these plans do or do not keep Cedarburg a top-ranked school district that is welcoming to a variety of viewpoints. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please make sure to only say your first name, not your last name or your address.
Good evening. My name is Juliana. I am in second grade. I came here to say that we should not be wearing masks. I can never see people smile. That makes me and my friends sad. Ms. Gans is my teacher. She's really nice and really pretty, and I did not see her smile all year. Teachers are supposed to look happy, and we don't have that. Adults are supposed to help kids, and you are not doing that. That's not how it's supposed to be. Please take away masks so we can have a happy end of the year. Goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Ladkin, N four six, W seven two four seven, Windwood Drive. Good evening. My name's Tom Ladkin. I have four children in the district, two of whom are at Westlon Elementary School. I am just beginning to get my feet wet when it comes to taking a more active role in my children's education environment, and want to thank the board for allowing me to share my concerns tonight. My concerns are related to a sign that had been posted on the school psychologist's door at Westlon up through last week. I'm still not clear as to when it was first posted, but it had been there I'm still not clear as to when it was first posted, but it'd been there for at least a few months. The sign read, "All genders welcome here." I understand and support the desire to be inclusive to all students in our district. Certainly, all parents and educators share the same desire, promote an environment of learning. However, this message is inappropriate for elementary-school-aged children. Instead of simply stating, "All students welcome here," to reinforce the idea of inclusion, this communication bridged beyond the mandate of inclusion into a social and political statement. "All genders are welcome here" is very difficult for young, impressionable children to understand. I had a good conversation with Mr. Noel and Principal Ramos today, where they relate to me that the sign had been taken down from the door, and the district is reassessing the policy as it relates to, in my case, my youngest children. I say reassessing the policy, but the school district does not have a set policy to deal with this topic. My major concern is that the district instituted a policy in place without the parents of Westlon and maybe the other elementary schools, without notifying, without our parents being notified. Several parents I made aware of the sign share the same concern about messaging and are concerned that this policy was not shared with the parents of the elementary, elementary-school-aged children. Again, I believe it is perfectly appropriate to welcome all students to our learning environment. As well, less well-understood, potentially politically-charged statements have no place in an inclusive environment that we all seek for our young and impressionable children. I hope the board will take a hard look at this moving forward. I thank each member of the school board for the opportunity to share these comments and for your service to our community and our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Please step out. Oh, there's two of you. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Professor Kate Erickson. My address is West sixty, North nine eighty-two, Glenwood Drive. I did not have the intention of speaking this evening. I very quickly changed my mind. You cannot teach the history of this country without talking about race. I would have loved to have been at the curriculum meeting, but unfortunately, my brother was the manager of the casino that was shot up in Green Bay that weekend, so I went home to take care of my family. My grandmother was taken from her family by the federal government when she was five years old and placed in a boarding school in Wittenburg, Wisconsin, and beaten until she forgot her own language. I wasn't, as a native, allowed to practice my religion without freedom of persecution or prosecution in this country until nineteen seventy-eight. I hear all of this about critical race theory. You cannot teach history without talking about race. Okay? Learning history will sometimes disturb you. It will sometimes make you furious. It will sometimes make you ashamed. But if learning about history only makes you happy and proud, you are not learning history. I have said this before. I teach at the local technical college. I have taught at UW-Milwaukee, and I have seen your graduates. While their writing skills are fantastic in my classes, their general knowledge about basic American history and state of Wisconsin history is extremely lacking. If we are to be proud of the education that we are affording our children here in Cedarburg, they need to have a well-rounded education. All sides need to be covered. The world we are sending them out into does not look like Cedarburg. I am very happy to hear that there is work being done on diversity, equity, and inclusion. It would be nice to see this move forward even more so because I would love nothing more than to allow my daughter to remain in the school district that shows enough respect to teach the history of everyone in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have two more.
Hello. My name is Erica Turner, W six six, N seven three two, Madison Avenue. While we are patting ourselves on the back for being the fourth-best high school in Wisconsin, we are missing the harm that our students of color are enduring from our district. Please understand that acknowledging that fact does not take away from the well-deserved accolades for our academics. We've reached out to you via telephone calls, via emails. We've supported other community members, families, and students as they've stood before you to speak their truth. We asked for the discussion of race and racism within our district to get added to the agenda so that we could have a constructive conversation rather than a string of public comments. In our desperation to prove to you that there is a problem with racism in our district and your continued refusal to allow this topic as a CSD agenda item, we've reached out to students, families, and community members yet again to gather stories and experiences to put on display for the board. The chronic stress, repeated racialized experiences, including harassment, microaggressions, the related trauma, continues to plague our students while our seemingly apathetic board sits in silence. At the last curriculum meeting, you said that you wanted to gather feedback from larger, community-wide groups on a variety of district data points. You told us that you had a large volume of data that you planned to analyze to guide your next steps. I want to paraphrase Sir Austin Bradford Hill when I say that the data that you seek represents all of our students with their tears wiped away. We stand before you every month, reporting on race-based harassment. Please stop making students, families, and community members put their pain on display to feed your need for the proof of racism. It's triggering, and it's re-traumatizing. We hear the stories. We tell you the stories, and you don't make any substantive changes. And it tells us that you don't believe us, or worse, that you don't care. Lack of knowledge, we can fix. Lack of perspective, we can fix. But if it's willful blindness, that's your choice, and it tells us that our dignity, safety, security, and pursuit of happiness is deprioritized yet again. It seems that the community hears everything except what we're actually saying. Please listen to our words rather than fear-mongering. I'm happy to stand behind my words, but I will not continue to defend myself against things that I have not said. Ending racism cannot be the sole responsibility of those traumatized by it. We need all parents, all students, all faculty, all board members, and our entire community actively involved to end the harassment that we're enduring. Thank you.
We've reached the limit of thirty minutes for our public comment. Who else out there would like to speak? Ma'am, I saw you.
There was one lady in the center, and a young man up in the top.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend it so those last two members of the public can speak.
Second, Padberg.
Motion and a second. Roke Hall, Knightsall. Leach?
Aye.
Creer?
Aye.
Padberg?
Aye.
Reimers an aye. Ma'am, or sir, whichever one of you would like to go first.
My name is Jennifer Meldman. I live at three hundred Bobolink Avenue, Grafton, five three zero two four. I'm not prepared to speak, so if this isn't as eloquent as I'd like it to be, please forgive me. I just want to make two points. Regarding the mask on the agenda for Monday, changes possibly happening. There are fifteen days left of school. I don't know why we're arguing over fifteen days. We've had an extremely successful school year. Kids have, I know, when I can take off my mask, it feels really good. But we have fifteen days left. Certain students are just beginning to come back into the in-person setting. My child is so excited when a friend of hers, who she's been missing, is coming back to school because finally, parents feel safe to send their kids back to school. We have AP exams coming up. We still have MAP testing coming up. Concerns were brought to the board at the previous meeting about we couldn't have staff shortages, that we could see a complete upturn in virtual, in-person kids moving back to virtual, and a complete disruption to our school program for these last fifteen days of school. People need time to prepare. Fifteen days is not enough. If you don't want your child attending school in person when masks are optional, you don't have time to make other arrangements. Fifteen days. Are we really going to argue over fifteen days? Let's come together and make a decision that is in the best interest of everyone for the last fifteen days so that students can end strong and celebrate the success of a very stressful year. The other point that I would like to make are the comments being made about racism in the district and also acceptance and tolerance of minority communities. I've been coming to these meetings and listening, and we have this, people asking again and again and again for this to be put on as an agenda item. And if you want to stop these long meetings that go till midnight, could you just put it on the agenda? Or could you please host a meeting to have a thoughtful discussion and listen to people's concerns? People do not feel listened to when they stand at a microphone, speak, and cannot be responded to. All that people are asking is that they are listened to, heard, and responded to. And it's not that hard to do. So please reconsider putting this on the agenda so we can have a meaningful discussion.
Thank you. Please only state your first name. When you come down, don't state your last name or your address, please.
Hi, my name is Whit, and may you please make masks optional because I can't breathe. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. And that does it for the public comment portion of the meeting. We have addressed all items.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second?
Motion and a second. Knightsall?
Aye.
Leach?
Aye.
Creer?
Aye.
Padberg?
Aye.
Reimers an aye. Thank you, everyone.